It's Thursday, May 23rd. We were supposed to start at 5:00, but it's 5:38. Brian, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Ripa.
Present.
Dr. Hopkins. Ms. Inocencio.
Present.
Mr. Jackson. Ms. LaCour.
Here.
Ms. Maris. Mr. Lachran. Mr. Siobhan.
There.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Thank you. Can you do the Open Public Meeting Act, please?
In accordance with the Little Public Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting orders were sent to the Courier-News, The Home District Review, The Star Ledger, The Franklin Report, Town and for Franklin Township, Franklin Township Club Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, PEO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters including student matters, personnel matters, and contract negotiations? So moved by Nancy. Can I get a second? Seconded by Sammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We'll be back. Thank you.
We just, it's still Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, and we're back from confidential. It's okay. We were in confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters including student matters, personnel matters, and contract negotiations. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. So we're back into regular session. Can I request everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Erica, can you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. Bill, can you read the mission statement, please?
.................. I'm sorry to put the...
Okay.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with Addendum A, please? Moved by Sammy. Seconded by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have our student today for the Student Representative Report.
Good evening, oh, good evening, everybody. My name is Kailin Platt, and I am the Student Government BOE Liaison. Here are some of the things going on at Franklin High School. The senior class is getting ready for the end-of-year events such as the senior trip, prom, and the yearbook dinner. Project graduation permission slips are still available for students to pick up. The student government will be receiving awards from the NJASC, ASC, for the state charity and volunteering aspects of Franklin High School. And here are some of the upcoming events. Senior trip is on May 29th. The senior yearbook signing dinner is June 4th. Senior award night is June 6th, and the senior prom is June 13th. Here are some of the events that are happening as listed on the FHS calendar. The FHS dance concert is May 23rd. NJSLA makeup testing, May 28th through May 31st. FHS district dance showcase is May 30th, and the SAT exam is June 1st. FHS dance company concert is June 5th. FHS AVA award is June 7th, and the FHS vocal music concert is June 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. So could I ask a question? Are you a senior?
Yes.
Perfect. So I would like all of us to applaud you because this will be your last board meeting. Thank you so much, and good luck for your future.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Unless, of course, you want to come back and be a teacher, Kailin. Unless, of course, you want to be a teacher and come back. We can always hire you.
No, thank you.
Okay. So, Kailin, before you leave, which college are you going to?
Harvard.
Very nice! Congratulations.
Well, see ya at graduation.
I'll see you at prom.
And with that, I will pass it on to Mary for our presentation and recognition.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first one is recognition of Doc Cunningham and his organization called See America in Color, Civics Engagement Project. In the summer of 2019, the district was approached by Doc Cunningham about the launch of an essay contest to support what he referred to as "A Collaboration to Advance Civic Leadership, Social Change, and Community Development." This unique and timely civic engagement project had a purpose, and that became its name, to See America in Color. Doc Cunningham founded this project in part as a way to promote 21st century view of social issues and celebrate a civic spirit in culture and community in a way that a winning spirit in sports and business were celebrated. That first essay contest with the theme "To Reach Higher for a Better Nation" drew on the civic ideals of John F. Kennedy and social justice efforts of Martin Luther King Jr. to focus on the Black experience in America and civic engagement. Franklin High School students who were successful in the contest were recognized at an award ceremony where Dr. Ravalley was also given the School Innovator Award. Quotes from the Franklin High School essay contest winners showed the promise of how Franklin Township Public Schools' focus on diversity would evolve. One student said, "Though everyone leads a different life and holds diverse beliefs, all Americans should want to see the prosperity of each individual despite race, gender, ethnicity, et cetera." And so the See America in Color movement continued with messages put forth through social media, other essay contests, and Friday night flights where civic engagement and career dreams were brought to new heights. These virtual forums featured civics and educational and business leaders. Our own staff, students, and BOE members were able to serve on these panels. The opportunity for students to express their views expanded from essays to other media forums as the See America in Color contests continued. And a day of civics was launched with Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Daniel Logren, being honored. Doc continued his work with virtual forums and email blasts. He recently brought his message on the importance of civil engagement to our Franklin High School students in person at a civil engagement forum earlier this spring. It was called "How I Can Impact Change." So for helping to show our students that they can indeed be voices for change, the board would like to recognize and thank you, Doc Cunningham. If you could come.
To the Franklin Township School Board, school officials, residents, and guests. It's a special moment, special time for me to be acknowledged in this way for a couple of reasons. One, on May 25th in 2019, my mom passed. And when my mom passed, that was the final push I think I needed to launch SAIC. And so as Mary mentioned, it wasn't long after that that I was connected to the Franklin Township School Board and in particular to Dr. Ravalley and Nancy LaCour. And I've shared this with Dr. Logren and others before. I didn't have a chance to meet Dr. Ravalley in person until we did that essay contest. And I was so struck by his interaction with the students. I was so struck by his involvement in seeing to the success of the program that at that day, at that point in time, I said to myself, "I'm going to make every effort that I can to connect with him and his organization and his team to be of service to this school district." And thankfully to Dr. Ravalley, he has helped to make that possible. And of course to Nancy LaCour for the times that we have chatted on the phone where she, we started out with a five-minute conversation, and it turned out to be a 30-minute conversation where she was basically schooling me on things. So I'm grateful for those two reasons. One, that here it is, that you have decided to acknowledge my work around May 25th, when my mom passed, which gave me that final push. And the fact that there was that picture with Dr. Ravalley and myself at the essay contest is very rewarding to me. So for those who aren't aware of what SAIC stands for, See America in Color, it's a social edge campaign and platform which I launched after a series of national news stories that didn't sit well with me. I was frustrated, confused, ticked off, any set of words that might capture the anger that we feel when news stories happen that rock us to the core. And so I said to myself, I wasn't going to rely on someone to explain the issues to me anymore. I was going to do my own research, and I embarked on what I call a deep dive in American history, the Black to America story, and hometown strong comebacks. And what, as you might imagine, that allowed me to head back into the '60s where I spent some time reviewing the civil rights movement. And one of the takeaways was not only were we dealing with protests and civil unrest in the street, but something new in terms of consumer technology arrived, it was the colored TV set. And what the colored TV set did for us, it allowed us to see what was happening up close and personal. It allowed us to see America in color. And that was the first point at which the concept came to be. And so as you might imagine, I was a little bit excited, and I thought to myself, okay, great. But how would I explain the concept? How would I explain the project to a younger audience? And this is where students came in. How would I explain this to my own children? And so because I have a technology background, I put my tech hat on. And a simple way to understand SAIC is when you consider the difference between how a black and white TV works and how a colored TV works. A black and white TV works by projecting a stream of light and varying the intensity of that light such that we get different shades of black and white and gray. Just basic, in a nutshell. A colored TV, on the other hand, instead of projecting a stream of white light, and I say that on purpose, it projects three streams of colored light, red, green, and blue. And it's the process of combining those three streams of colored light that gives us the beautiful picture we see on our colored TV set. And what dawned on me was during this deep dive, during this research, what I was actually doing was combining American history, the Black to America story, and hometown strong comebacks. And in the process, it gave me a much better picture of civic and social issues for a higher level of citizenship. So in a nutshell, that's how SAIC came to be. And I like to describe it as something that allows us to get a better handle on hot-button issues by how we see America in color, not just in black and white. Lastly, let me close with this. And Mary mentioned a number of the programs, both virtual and in-person, that we have been able to accomplish with the support of Dr. Ravalley and his team, Dr. Logren as well. And I should say, Dr. Ravalley was almost genius in how you connected me with Dr. Logren because we've been able to work together like two pilots in a cockpit. And I see this project as that type of thrust and working with them really helped me to take things off. But I'll leave you, because Mary mentioned sports, I'll leave you with a sports analogy because sports is so integral in our culture, and it helps me explain the concept fairly simply. And so you know, in basketball, one of the ways you are credited for scoring is what's called an assist, right? So you can score yourself, or you can be assisted in scoring, right? And so over these past four, five years, what I've tried to do is to position myself, to position my skill set, position my passion in such a way that I can be, it can be, an assist to what the Franklin Township Public School system is doing, right? Whether it's in DEI, whether it's in civics education, whether it's in social impact. But I should also say, I'm grateful from working with each of you for the assist that you have provided to me and to See America in Color in giving it legs. And so you should know, this honor, this recognition, is going to give me another push to run even further. So thank you so much, and I'm grateful for this recognition.
Okay. The second, oh, sorry. First, the second presentation is the recognition of The Links Incorporated for their work with the district in an event called Bright Smiles, Bright Futures Program with the Colgate Parmalov Dental Van. I'd like to ask Ms. Keon Peters, our supervisor of school counseling, grades K to 8, to join me since she was instrumental in bringing this group to us. Earlier this school year, some 758 students from the district's seven elementary schools were given a dental screening in the Colgate Dental Van through the Bright Smiles, Bright Futures Program. This program was a collaborative effort of the Central Jersey and Raritan Valley chapters of The Links Incorporated. The Links Incorporated is an international not-for-profit corporation and one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations with a mission to enrich, sustain, and ensure the culture and economic survival of African-Americans and other persons of African ancestry. The Bright Smiles, Bright Futures Program provides Links chapters the opportunity to impact their communities by helping families become knowledgeable on how oral health affects the body, providing children free education and screenings via their partnership with Colgate Parmalov Colgate Dental Van, providing families referrals to dentists willing to provide services for free and/or at nominal costs, and helping families become knowledgeable about how diet affects dental care. This program was brought to the district by The Links representative, Ms. Connie Pizarro, in conjunction with Ms. Peters and our district head nurse, Teri Giorgiani, and assistant head nurse, Kim McNate. We anticipate bringing the program back next year and hopefully giving even more Franklin Township Public School students something to smile about. I would like to ask Ms. Pizarro and Ms. Carol Walker from The Leads Incorporated to come up to the podium.
So first, I would like to thank the Board of Education coming from a family of educators. I'm the only one who didn't major in education in college. I would like to thank you for everything that you do for our students and for educating all students everywhere because it's an impact everywhere. I'd like to thank Connie for putting together, connecting all of our community and our chapters and working together with the Board of Education to provide the dental services. This is something that is just phenomenal, a phenomenal service. So, would you like to say anything?
I guess I just want to say I was just very excited to be able to do this. When we first thought of this, we were looking at one school. And then we said, "One? Why not two?" And there was like, "Well, why not all of them?" And my husband often teases me and says, "I don't know how to do anything small." And he's right, I don't. And so we said we were going to do all the schools. And it really made my heart feel good when I saw the students lining up and coming out, and some of them had never been to a dentist. And they weren't afraid. They were excited. They were excited about getting on the van. They were asking questions, and it was just amazing. And I said to myself, this is how it should be for kids, for their first dental experience to be one that's good so they don't feel frightened. I'm just happy that we were able to do this. I am a Franklin Township resident. My kids went to Franklin High School. All the public schools, from the elementary all the way up to high school. I used to be the head of project graduation when my kids were in the school. So I believe, I drank the Kool-Aid, okay? So I believe in the public school system, and I'm just happy to be able to do something to help the kids. So thank you for allowing us to do this, and we look forward to doing it again the next school year.
Special thank you, Dr. Ravalley and Board of Education for trusting us with this project. Thank you so much.
Well, as we step out front, I also wanted to take an opportunity, first off, to thank you ladies, but also thank Mrs. Peters, who I know is a labor of love for her, and it goes well above and beyond what she is typically responsible for. So I appreciate everything you did to help organize this, Mrs. Peters. She's our elementary guidance supervisor.
You should be part of this, Chuck.
Thank you, Mary, as always. And now we're going to do some speed talking so we can get everyone out in time or onto our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I only have three items, Teacher Climate and Culture Grant. I want to congratulate Dr. Logren, Ms. Washington, our entire team of educators who worked to put together our Teacher Climate and Culture Grant. That's a state competitive grant, so not every school district gets one. Competitive meeting, it's scored by the quality of your grant. Thanks for their hard work. On our application, we were awarded approximately $200,000 to support efforts that will help improve teacher climate and culture. We'll utilize the funds to support the work of teachers and instructional coaches who will collaborate over the summer to develop ready-made exemplar lesson plans for the new elementary literacy curriculum, which was launched earlier this year. And these plans, when ready, will then become accessible to all teachers of this subject district-wide. Of course, the plans will be something that can be modified. And our hope is that, or modified to the individual teacher's needs, and our hope is that these sample lesson plans will allow teachers to reclaim time spent on lesson preparation, which allows them to focus more attention on classroom instruction and in turn feel a little more satisfaction about their chosen profession. So congratulations, Dr. Logren, the entire team who put that, who put the effort into developing the grant. We're super excited about it. And again, it was a competitive grant. Not everybody got it. We got a nice chunk of money as a result of it, so. Also, this past month, and I know you saw the resolutions on the board agenda last month, but I want to remind everybody, it was Teacher Appreciation Week a little bit earlier this month. During Teacher Appreciation Week, it was also School Nurses Day. And the week after Teacher Appreciation Week was Special Education Week. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Day and Special Education Week just the same, with a host of different activities throughout our schools. And I just wanted to take one more opportunity before the month goes by to thank our wonderful faculty and staff, especially our teachers, our school nurses, and our special educators for all they do to help our students reach their individual learning goals each and every day. So, year-end activities. You heard from Kailin that it is almost time. We're very close to the end of the year, and she rattled off a lot of the things that are happening at the high school. Well, those things happen district-wide, maybe not the prom, and maybe not graduation. But we have, you know, in the final few weeks, we will have many exciting celebrations, award ceremonies, promotions, graduations. You name it, we'll be doing it. And that leads us all down the road to really our final two events, or final three events, I'll call them. We have our middle school promotion, which will occur on June 19th at 4:00 p.m. So middle school promotion this year is June 19th at 4:00 p.m., and that happens at Franklin High School. So we're excited for that. We bring both of our middle school campuses together under one roof, and everyone gets promoted at the high school that they'll be entering in September. So we're looking forward to that. That's usually a wonderful event. And then, of course, that's followed by one of the largest events of the school year, and that's the Franklin High School graduation, typically attended by well over 3,000 people. So we're excited about that, as usual. That will take place this year on Thursday, the 20th, which is the last day of school. So different than in years past where we had additional snow days and all the other luxuries of having some snow days remaining, we didn't have that this year. We had lots of, maybe not snow, but lots of floods, if you recall. So we had to close school on a couple of occasions that now caused us to use all of our closing days. With that said, we will graduate on Thursday, the last day of school, after dismissal at 3:00 p.m. It's a minimum session day, so our high school students, faculty members who aren't participating in graduation, whatnot, will be long gone. And we've done this in the past, so I'm certain it will work out well, as it typically does. Mr. Wilson's all ready to go. He's got our team of very capable safety officers and helpers and our high school administrators. Everybody are ready to go. So we're looking forward to a great program on June 20th. And then, of course, that's followed by none other than, and you mentioned it, and thank you for your help in the previous years. And I see Nick is here. Thank you for your help this year and then years previous as well. But that's followed by none other than Project Graduation, which is a big deal here, and it's been a big deal here for many years. We're always excited about that program. We've done that too, where we've had a 3:00 p.m. graduation followed up by Project Graduation. Does put a little stress on the event, but we'll work with our team to make sure that we can do everything we can to help facilitate that. Hopefully, the weather will be beautiful, and we'll be good to go. So that's really lots of events that are occurring. Those are some of the real special ones. And if you have any other questions or want to see the schedule for any other events, I encourage anyone and everyone to check your individual school website where some of those things should be posted. And that's it for us.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the board president's report. So I will really speed talk because I got two pages to report. Alumni news. Franklin High School alumna Kristen Seggio was recently scheduled to perform at the State Theater with the National Tour of Mean Girls. Fellow alumna Malia Joy Moon, class of 2020, who recently deb- Fellow alumna Malia Joy Moon, class of 2020, who recently debuted on Broadway in Hell's Kitchen, has been nominated for a Tony Award. We wish her congratulations on this honor. The Tony Awards are on Sunday, June 16th, 2024, on CBS at 8:00 p.m. Mark your calendars. News about recent fine visual and performing arts department honors. The staff and students of this year's spring musical, Chicago Teen Edition, were recently recognized by the prestigious Paper Mill Playhouse Rising Star Awards for their incredible work on bringing this production to life. Six of our students received a Rising Star Award nomination for their portrayals as the Merry Murdresses in the Outstanding Performance by a Feature Ensemble Group category. They are Tatiana Foray, Isatu Jalo, Chloe Jackson, Gabriel Granados Anamorado, Tia Wright, and Afia Asamoah. Tia Wright also received an honorable mention for her portrayal of Velma Kelly in the Outstanding Performer in a female identified leading role category. Additionally, the production received nomination recommendations in many categories, the most ever received by the Franklin High School program thus far. For the complete list of the nomination recommendations, please see the district website under Warrior Pride. This fall, Ms. Okechue, Samson G. Smith Orchestra teacher, entered a quartet of students into a young artist competition run by the Chamber Music Society of Lincoln Center. Of the hundreds of entries, our students were selected to perform at a young artist concert at Lincoln Center. Not only will our students have the chance to perform on this world-renowned stage, but as part of being selected to perform, our students will receive a one-hour coaching class with N. Chi Cheng, an associate violinist of the New York Philharmonic. The entire FMS Competition Orchestra will accompany our award-winning quartet. Nikhil Lal, Sahana Arvindakashan, Sheila Clay, and Aaron Ling to Lincoln Center to cheer on their peers as they perform in this world-famous venue. Scripps National B, National Spelling Bee. One of our middle school students, sixth grader Aditya Jagann Mohan, at the Samson G. Smith campus, is one of five students from New Jersey who are headed to Maryland later this month to compete in the 96th Scripps National Spelling Bee. This year's contest will be held in National Harbor, Maryland, from May 28th to 30th. Aditya will be one of 245 competitors. Magical Staff. Congratulations to Bianca Rodriguez, teacher of third grade math at Elizabeth Avenue School, who is our most recently named teacher, who makes Magic, Magic Radio 98.3. She was nominated by Elizabeth Avenue School math coach Seju Patel and is noted to making connections with every student in her classroom. Also recently featured on Magic 98.3 was an interview with Pine Grove Manor Principal Hennessy Miles, who spoke about the Franklin Food Bank and the opportunities that organization gives the students of the district and their families. Finally, some upcoming events. Please visit the district website under Community Events for information on upcoming activities such as the annual Samson G. Smith HSC Alumni Cabaret at the Samson G. Smith on June 1st at 7:00 p.m. The Toucha Truck Event sponsored by the Franklin Township Police Department on June 8th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Hamilton Street Campus, and the Independence Day Firework Event on July 3rd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the municipal complex. Also join us for the Warrior Foundation Golf Outing on June 24th. More information on these events are on our website. You might have noticed that we have three board members missing, but even though they are not able to make it here, they're sending texts that make sure that you let our people know. So Walter just told us that, can you please mention at the board meeting, the girls' flag football team made it to the Big Central Group Championship. Since Franklin is now ranked a higher seed, they will be playing at home next week against Hunterdon Central. Time and date to be decided. So that's the end of my report, and now I would like to ask for a motion to open for public comments on agenda items only.
Second.
Okay, moved by Nancy, seconded by Sammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Comments for public agenda items only is now open.
See a nun, Madam President, I move to close the public session.
So second.
Okay. Brian, you got that? Awesome. Okay, public comments is now closed. We're on to committee and liaison reports. Sammy as Chair for Curriculum, can you read Curriculum Report, please?
Sure. Curriculum met on May 13th at 6:00 p.m. Virtually in attendance were myself as chair, Dr. Hopkins, Mr. Grippo, Artman Singh, our president, Dr. Daniel Lagren, Dr. Ravalli, and Mr. Siegel. The committee reviewed the following proposals for board consideration. A motion to approve a CTE general education program as part of our career and technical education offerings. Students will earn four credits from Fairleigh Dickinson University while taking a series of education courses at Franklin High School. That's just another CTE that we're offering, so we're growing that, it's awesome. Motion to approve the following Franklin High School lab curricula. ELA Essentials 9-10 for students in grades nine and 10, beginning September 2024. Math Explorations 11 and 12 for students in grades 11 and 12, beginning September 2024. There was a motion to approve a course name change from Acting for Film and TV Honors to CTE Aspects of Film and Television, for the purposes of matching the district's agreement with RVCC. There was another motion to approve support of the Georgian Court University NPD Program Grant to secure funds to provide professional development in support of multilingual learners. There was another motion to approve support of the Rutgers University Application for a U.S. Department of Education Mental Health Demonstration Grant entitled School Counseling Prevention of Intervention Project. Motion to approve the revised Aviation Club Field Trip scheduled for May 30th, and a motion to approve school offerings and summer programs for 2024. The committee also discussed the following items. Elementary rigor, study updates, bioethics lessons, and ELA department. The meeting concluded at 6:55 p.m.
Thank you. Erica is Communications Chair, can you please read that report?
Okay, so the Communications and Public, oh, thank you. The Communication and Public Engagement Committee met on, can you hear me? Okay. That better? Okay.
Much better.
Thanks. The Communication and Public Engagement Committee met on May 13th, 2024. Present were myself as chair, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Dr. Ravalli, our Board President, Artman Singh, and Mary Clark. The meeting began at 7:45 p.m. The committee was shown the template for the new district website. While the template is still a work in progress, the committee was able to see some of the features of the design, including the live feed function, which will allow trained staff members to post good news directly to their website. The district's admission to the Township Newsletter is complete with an expected publication date before the end of the school year. Plans are in the works for a focus on Franklin end-of-year wrap-up video featuring highlights of this school year. The committee was informed of recent surveys shared with our school community, including the NJSCI survey, which pertains to school climate and culture, the Safe Return Plan comment survey, which pertains to safety and health protocols for the next school year, and a survey concerning the rigor of the elementary curriculum. Finally, news of recent events around the district was shared, including the elementary invention competition at Connerly Road School and Family Night at Pine Grove Manor School, which featured members of the registration staff who provided assistance to families on how to navigate the registration process and the Genesis Parent Portal. The meeting ended at 8:05 p.m. Submitted.
Thank you. Nancy, can you do Facilities as Chair and Finance, followed by that, as Lori's not available?
Sure. The Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, May 21st, the meeting opened at 6:04. Present was myself, as chair, Walter Jackson, Lori Maris, Artman Singh, Dr. Ravalli, Brian Banano, Stephen Freed, Mark McNamara, and Ryan Ellis. Updates were an application for temporary instructional space. Mr. Banano discussed the process for continuing the use of temporary classrooms. Each year, the BOE must apply to the county for approval. Transportation vendor audit report, Dr. Ravalli, excuse me, presented the findings of the People Transportation, People Transportation Safety Institute, FHS baseball scoreboard, the, or softball scoreboard. The committee discussed the process and possibility of new scoreboards for the baseball and softball fields in the future. Health Center mural update, Mr. Banano displayed pictures of the murals in progress at the Warrior Health Center. Facility use, the committee discussed two facilities, two facility use requests that will appear on the agenda this evening, and the energy report. Ryan Ellis provided a report to the committee regarding the status of Claremont Solar System, and the meeting adjourned at 6:58. And following that was our Finance Committee. Same people were present. We, for finance, financials and contracts, we reviewed the supplemental bills list for the month of May. The committee reviewed the Board Secretary's report, Treasurer's report, and Transfer Report for the month of May. Our charter school payment, the district paid $1,677,651 in tuition and $49,749 in transportation for the month of May. This brings a total charter school cost to $20,49,400 for the year-to-date. Tuition is 19, tuition year-to-date is $19,661,000, and transportation year-to-date is $44,739,000. The financial auditor, Mr. Freed discussed the award of a contract to a new financial auditing firm named Supli Clooney and Company, CPAs, and additional state aid. Mr. Freed informed the committee that the district will receive an additional $174,142 in the equalization aid for the FY '25 school year. This amount represents 45% of the reduction in state aid that was originally taken away from the district for the fiscal year, 2025 school year, and the meeting ended at 7:20.
Thank you. Bill, can you do safety and security?
Sure. Safety and Security met on May 9th at 6:00 p.m. in person. At the meeting was myself, chair, Erica Inosencio, and Jimmy Parker, with district staff, Dr. Ravalli, and Mr. Wilson. Action items. The committee conducted a hearing for harassment, intimidation, and bullying appeal for a case, long number, it's in a minute. The result of the hearing will be voted on later this evening. The committee also discussed the 2022-23 HIB grades that were recently received from the Department of Education. You may recall that the board approved the submission of each school's HIB self-assessment back in the fall. The board will acknowledge receipt of the HIB grades later this evening, and the HIB grades will be posted on the district's website. The committee also discussed the district's student suspension and the harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports for the month of April. The committee reviewed a partnership with the New Jersey Department of Health and the Camden County Educational Services Commission to provide our school community with help, support, and resources. These resources and supports will be made available through an app called Help Me. The administration is hopeful that the app will be available for use before the end of the school year. We had a discussion item. The committee also reviewed the preliminary Student Safety Data Period One Report for the first half of the current school year. The full SSDS Period One Report will be presented to the board and the public at its meeting in June. The committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:30 p.m.
Thank you. Dennis, can you please do policy?
The Policy Committee met on May 13th, 2024 at 7:15. The committee members that attended was myself as chair, Erica Inosencio, Jimmy Parker, Dr. Ravalli was there, our Board President, Artman Singh, Mary Clark, and Ari Siegel. The committee reviewed and discussed revisions to the following policies. Policy 2431.3, heat participation policy for student athlete safety. The policy was updated to better align with the law, which requires districts to follow certain policies issued by the New Jersey Student Interschollickit Athletic Association. Policies 2431.4, provisions and treatment of student-related concussions and head injuries, and the accompanying regulation were revised and rewritten to reflect the new guidelines published by the New Jersey Department of Education. These new documents also reflect the most recent guidelines from the CDC. Policies 3324 and 4324 pertain to the right of privacy of teachers, teaching, and support staff. The revisions to these policies extend to protections of the existing policies and prohibit audio or video recordings of a teaching or support staff member or a student by any student, other school staff members, visitors, and any other persons while the staff member is performing their duties unless permission is granted. An exception for events which are open to the public is included in the, in the, in the policies. The annual summary progress report and assessment of the district's wellness policy will also appeal, appear on the agenda for May Board of Education meeting. The, hold on, damn, I lost it, hold on. I lost it. Give me a second, I lost it. The committee discussed the form which was completed by the Wellness Committee and provides some details of the district's work in the areas of nutrition and physical activity. The meeting ended at 7:45.
Thank you. And finally, if Sammy, you can read the Personnel Committee report.
Sure. So Personnel met on May 15th at 6:06, concluded at 6:56. Members in attendance were Walter Jackson as our chair, Dennis de Court, myself, Artman Singh as the Board President, ex officio, Dr. Ravalli, Mr. Banano, and Colleen Devlin. Personnel Negotiations Committee will review and are discussing the following items. Personnel Report, May 15th, 2024, number 11. The Personnel Committee reviewed the Personnel Report. Report appointments include a secretary, teaching staff members, and five J-1 visa new hires. Additionally, stipend recommendations for 2024-25 Fall Coaches, including football, cross-country, and so on, ESL Curriculum, Writing, and Child Study Team Evaluations. Also reviewed were resignations, leave minus up, and a few other points. Reappointments, 2024-25 School Year, attachments A through G, including the Assistant to the Business Administrator, new hire in process, Assistant Manager of Human Resources, also a new hire in process, and the Hillcrest Principal, remember, new hire in process, which we will be talking about very shortly. Non-aligned contracts, individual staff contracts were shared with the board. FTEA negotiations update, Mr. Banano updated the, the committee on the proposal, and then we have good of the order. Concluded at 6:56, thank you.
Thank you. Any board members have questions on the committee reports? Erica, any questions?
No question, thank you.
Bill?
Dr. Ravalli, what's the next steps with the scoreboard proposals? Dr. Ravalley, what's the next steps with the scoreboard proposals?
Mr. McNamara, the Facilities Committee asked that Mr. McNamara research it a little more with regard to actual location because Mr. McNamara is under the impression that even though that field is built on an easement, there may be some practical ways to actually locate scoreboards where they belong. And then he's going to have further conversation with the Booster Club, who I believe is looking to raise a few dollars with relationship to contributing toward this. And then the Facilities Committee asked that we explore this as a possible capital project to be included with the capital projects list during the development of the, I guess it'd be FY '26, right? FY '26 would be the next budget, right? FY '26 budget, which would be around this time next year.
Good. Okay, good. That's good progress. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Dennis?
I'm good.
Nancy?
No.
Sammy?
No question.
Thank you. So on to new business.
Great. I'd like to move forward. A1, travel and related expense reimbursement. R1? Oh, yeah, missed that one, sorry. R1, monthly reports, M1, minutes of the board meetings, A1, travel and related expense reimbursement, A2, affirm harassment, intimidation, and bullying decisions, A3, harassment, intimidation, and bullying decision, A4, harassment, intimidation, and bullying grades, A5, use of internet search engines, A6, update the organizational chart, A7, extraordinary aid, A8, district wellness policy summary progress report and assessment, A9, FTPS revised safe return plan, A10, Help Me partnership, A11, ARPA grant, A12, revised policies, first reading, A13, facilities use, A14, Juneteenth resolution, A15, AAPI Heritage Month, A16, stigma-free resolution, A17, transportation vendor audit report, B1, warrants and payrolls, B2, financial reports, B3, contract approval, B4, change orders, B5, FY '25 tax levy payment, B6, certification of implementation of the corrective action plans for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, B7, award of RFQ auditing services, B8, award of RFQ occupational therapy services, B9, award of RFP behavioral therapy services, B10, receipt of bids, recycling of district vehicles, B11, award of bids, recycling of district vehicles, B12, FY 2025, application for temporary instructional space use, B13, resolution for participation in coordinated transportation, C1, out-of-district students, 2023-24, C2, field trip destinations, C3, field trip applications, C4, educator evaluation system, C5, district leader evaluation system, C6, summer offerings and programs, 2024, C7, FHS academic lab curricula, C8, CTE, general education program proposal, C9, course name change, C10, Georgian Court University grant application, C11, school counseling grant, P1, create position, P2, new job description, P3, employment contracts, P4, salary allocations, P5, psychiatric and physical examination, P6, personnel report number 11, May 23rd, 2024. And that is all.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion for R1, M1, A1 through A17, B1 to B13, C1 to C11, P1 to P6, and we said in the beginning it includes addendum A. Any questions? Any comments? Anyone? I need a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Nancy. Can we get roll call, Brian?
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
I'm going to stay from P5 by everything else, yes. P5, they say P5, okay.
Ms. Inosensio?
Yes.
This report?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So I would like to welcome our new incoming principal for Hillcrest Elementary School. Dr. Ravalley, would you like to say anything?
Sure. We're very excited to welcome Lori Vaccaro, who will be our new principal at Hillcrest School, but Lori is by no means new principal. She is completing six years. She's working currently at Sussex Avenue Elementary School in the Morris School District, and she's looking to join us, and we're very excited to welcome her aboard, and if you want to invite her to say a few things, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you. I'm too lucky to have the opportunity to serve as the next principal at Hillcrest School. I look forward to working with you.
Your mic may not be on, although you're pretty clear.
So again, thank you for the opportunity to serve as the next principal at Hillcrest School. I am very much looking forward to joining the community and working alongside staff, students, parents, and the board to build upon the existing legacy that is the Franklin Township School District, which provides a safe educational environment where all students can thrive academically, socially, emotionally, and staff professionally. So I am truly honored and am excited to be a part of this amazing district. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, we're now on to comments from the public on any topic. Can I get a motion to open?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public on any topic is now open. Please state your name and address.
Hi, how are you? My name's Joel Payson. I'm resident of 28 Bering Way, Somerset, New Jersey. I've been a longtime resident, and I'm now back with the township, working with Parks and Recreation. I'm the youth development manager of Franklin Youth Center, so I just came to share three quick things, so I'll hold everybody so you guys can get out of here. The first thing I wanted to, sorry about that.
You can lift it up.
Yeah, I'm a little taller. So first thing I wanted to address was, we heard a few things that people were talking about the youth center, thinking that it was only allowed for one demographic. We did want to address that the youth center is available for everybody. It services all of the schools that we have, so all of our middle schools, our high schools, any charter schools, private schools in township, and all residents. So if anyone is interested in being able to join, it is welcoming for all communities. All the programs that we're offering currently through the youth center are completely free. We're focusing on technology with drone piloting as well as coding and typing Titans, which is one of our huge hits of classes that have been waitlisted. We also offer a lot of our recreational sports as well as arts and media and communication. So if any of our residents or have kids that are interested in joining those programs, it's free, and you guys can step in, and we'll help you sign up the registration. It's a little confusing, but we're here to be able to assist you through. There's two parts to it, just making sure that you actually create the rec desk account, that's for the entire family. So if anybody wants to participate in any of our recreational activities from kindergarten all the way up into our plus 55 community, feel free. And then if you do have that population, grade 6 through 12, ages 12 to 18, that want to be able to join the youth center, please circle back to the homepage and just click that membership. Everything is free, and we can help you with the documents. Our second, the second thing I have is our Franklin Youth Council. This is again open to grades 7 through 11. We're looking to push our diversity community for this, just because we feel like the word isn't really getting out there. So if you do have anyone that is a youth-run organization, they do all the volunteering, every one of our Parks and Recreation events, Memorial Day Parade, Fourth of July fireworks, our Christmas tree lighting, you name it. We have 70-plus kids that are ready and eager to volunteer at any event that you guys have going on, and they govern themselves. So please feel free, if you want any more information, I do have flyers for these, and I can hand them out for you guys. Lastly, we are having a large event on June 22nd, which is our luau summer kickoff, so right after graduation, if the kids aren't running out of town to go on some type of vacation, tell them feel free, free food, DJ, laser tag, you name it, all types of fun events we'll be having on June 22nd at the youth center. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing I have for you guys, I apologize for that, is that I'm also graduate of Franklin High School from 2008, so it's cool to be back and be able to see you guys still doing your thing. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishes to speak?
See, I know what else about it. President, move to close the public portion.
So second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comments are now closed, and now we're on to good of the order. Ms. Inosensio, anything?
Yes, so just, there I go, just a couple of things. I did get to attend the Franklin High School performance of Chicago, and it was unbelievable. These guys continue to blow me away, and I just, kudos to everyone involved. I told them all while I was there, and I'm just, I love attending, I think it's great, and clearly we're churning out some Broadway quality people, and I think we're going to continue to do that. So that was awesome. Again, we said it, but Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our educators, and Happy Nurses' Day to all of our nurses. So participated in that, and just, we can't say enough about our teachers. We love them all and appreciate everything that they do for our children. Let's see, that's pretty much it. Just congrats to our graduates. I think that we'll be here right before graduation, but an early congratulations to our graduates and all our students moving up, and happy AAPI Month. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Grippo?
So I've been at many events this past month, so I don't got a list of all in the school district, just terrific stuff. But tonight I want to congratulate Ms. Vaccaro for becoming principal of Hillcrest. And as I mentioned earlier at an earlier meeting, many years ago, Hillcrest was a blue-ribbon school. The principal at the time was a Miss Linda BA, and she was an unbelievable administrator. I had my first shot at being a vice principal then, and she had me filing records and putting labels on envelopes, I don't know what the heck I was doing, but she was a workaholic. But that school achieved congressional honor, and I asked Ms. Vaccaro if she could do that again, so we wish you the very best.
Dennis?
I would also like to welcome aboard our new principal at Hillcrest. Welcome aboard, and glad to have you on board, and we'll see what you got to, like Bill said, propel Hillcrest to higher and greater standards. And also, we, the prom will occur before the next board meeting, so just be safe, is, you know, we about to embark on a lot of great days, great times for our students, and I guess, you know, those, you know, the weather is changing, so traditionally, you know, the students will get a little antsy, so parents, let's finish up the school year strong, and our seniors, juniors, let's embrace and let's celebrate you in the right way, and let's be safe.
Thank you. Nancy?
This Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend a retirement party for Major Jeplo Vasquez and Sergeant Major Samuel Bobay, who are retiring from the district from our junior ROTC program. And it's a program that's really close to my heart. My son was in the class, but Mr. Wilson brought the program to the school, didn't necessarily know that it was going to be a success. He knew it was. And it wound up where we actually have so many kids in this program that are really doing a fantastic job. They police themselves in terms of, did you do your homework, or are you doing the right thing, or whatever. So it's really good that they're mentoring each other. The really cool thing about Saturday night, besides the feeling of family, was the kids that came back to Franklin, some of them have gone on to the military, some of them have gone on to other things, and joining the junior ROTC doesn't mean you have to join the military. But, I mean, just seeing some of the kids like from a very long time ago, and really what they've become, and they've become that because of the experiences that they had from Franklin High School, so, or their education at Franklin, but particularly the junior ROTC program. So saying goodbye to these two educators for me is going to be very difficult because I've developed a relationship with them over the years, and so I thank them for their service. The other thing is Monday is Memorial Day, and Franklin has a Memorial Day parade every year. And I was telling my husband, who was the coordinator of the parade for the past 16 years, that the statistics are, I think it's like 81% of Memorial Days, it rains. So Franklin High School marching band, our students, usually our junior ROTC, we just have a large presence in the parade, and it's just a really nice opportunity for everyone to come out and support, and, you know, the antique cars, all that stuff are really great, but to come out and listen to the program at the end of the parade, which is really about Memorial Day, and that's honoring the lives of people who gave their all. So, you know, to anyone that might want to attend the parade, you'll know on sometime on Saturday or Sunday whether or not the parade will take place, because the weather does not look good for Monday. And board members are of course always invited to march in the parade. We have a banner, I don't know if we even need it anymore. But, and to, about the proms, it's, proms are such a great time, and the promenade, and all the other things about prom, and to Dennis's point, just be smart and don't be stupid. And the same thing with the night of graduation, because this is just the beginning of the rest of your life. And for the people of that Project Graduation, Nick, we'll be spending the night together again. It's our one year, our annual time where we spend the night together, all night. And our spouses probably enjoy that. But it's an opportunity, if you have a student, or you have an opportunity to support this program, it is such a fantastic program, because it gives kids a huge party, and they go all out on making such a great event. And it's a secret to the juniors and everybody else, the underclassmen, the people that know about it, or the kids that are graduating, and people have been participating and volunteering their time in Project Grad for years, right? I don't know how long Martha's been doing it, but for a very long time. So, and it's because they're committed, because it's such a great program, and it's so well-run. So if you have an opportunity to support it, like through the clothing drive that I just missed, or other things, please take advantage and do that, and encourage your students to do that. And to, since we're, you know, Monday is about honoring our veterans that gave their all, to also, like, I like to honor our veterans who served. So, I'm Army mom, so, Dennis, I'm sure you got something different from the Navy, but to all of our veterans that have served, thank you very much for your service, and that's my remarks.
Thank you. And Sammy?
Yeah, I'll keep it short, so echo many of the statements. I would like to welcome our new vice prin, our new principal to Hillcrest. I feel very confident that you're going to do a great job. You bring a lot of energy, and I think a lot of- You bring a lot of energy and I think a lot of care for the students, so wish you the best of luck and I'll just send it off there. Thank you.
Thank you. So as some of you know, I listen to a lot of podcasts, so I wanted to share this congratulating our new principal in town and I wanted to end this because we're heading into Memorial Day weekend. It's not just about barbecues and fun, it's about remembering the people who have laid their lives, you know, for freedom for our country and it's also about empowerment and diversity. So I recently read and heard a podcast of, from Sally Krawcheck who is called the most powerful woman on Wall Street and she's the former head of Bank of America's Global Wealth and Investment Management. And my three takeaways from that were, the power of diversity is diversity. Research shows that you have to support performance. The best time to invest was yesterday, tomorrow is fine too. Start investing in your resources to build wealth that can grow over time. And I see that in our district. Dr. Ravalley has, and his administrative team, has really been investing in our resources in our district and building that up. And the third thing that she said was, the future of women's wealth is promising. This is for our women out there. The more women begin to invest and build wealth now, the more future generations can expect gendered wealthy inequalities to decrease. I think that was a very powerful statement and that's something that we should be teaching our women, our young adult women in our town that, you know, there is hope, there is still hope. And with that, go Franklin. Meetings adjourned.